If you would stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing and Mr. Bates will lead us in prayer this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy, especially freedom of religion, whether we worship you or not worship you. Thank you for family, your plan for a stable society. Thank you for our first responders who watch over our community. And lastly, thank you for faithful men and women who serve you in elected office. I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. We proceed. Roll call.
Bates.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Dine.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Gil.
Here.
Hopper.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Middleton.
Here.
And Williams.
Here.
We have a forum. I would ask all the councils that are here to be sure your microphones are turned on.
I'm sorry, I don't know if Williams was here.
Yes, he is here. Okay, all of you should have received copies of the minutes for our last regular meeting on March the 1st. Have a motion.
I saw move.
Motion, Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Lexi, I think I heard. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing done, and roll call in the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Minutes are approved on a vote of nine to zero. Reports, corporation councils.
You should have received the items semi-monthly and also the litigation report on SharePoint. And if you have questions about any of those items, we can discuss at a public meeting. I'd be happy to entertain those. If not, please contact me.
All right. Any questions at present? Anything from the controller at this time?
About this time.
Any other committee or board reports? I think you all received a copy of the minutes. Lexi sent out from the solid waste, Johnson County solid waste board. Any other committee or board reports? All right, this evening, I believe, we have Cheryl Dobbs with the Greenwood Public Library with us that would like to keep us.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you. I think Chrissy was going to share the screen with me so I can show my PowerPoint. So Chrissy, I'm ready for that if you are. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Good. Okay, so I'm just here to give you my once-a-year update, and this is about 2020, but also about our new bond. So looking back at 2020 at the library, probably a lot like you guys looking back at your 2020, it was not what we expected, but we learned a lot of really good things. We heard everything we did to virtual about a year ago, March 16th, we closed our real doors and opened our virtual doors. And even though we already had a lot of virtual activities, we really added to that quite a bit over the last year. So part of that was that we created over 130 videos. So we did Storytime instead of in-person, online programs, online. And we had really good responses from our community. We handed out kits to go with those programs. You wouldn't think that parents who are used to Storytime with their kids would also enjoy coming and picking up a bag of stuff and then doing Storytime at home. But if you remember how desperate parents were for stuff for their kids to do while they were busy trying to do their own work, it was just a good fit for everybody, and I think we'll continue to do it into the future at some level. We also launched the book-delivery home service, and that has been a good hit as well. We'll continue to do that. Curbside delivery, over 2,000 curbside book deliveries in 2020. Again, it's a service that we'll keep doing into the future. We issued cards online. We did everything online. We increased the number of ebooks available at the library and the number of streaming movies that you could watch from the library. So that was really a good success as well.
You're doing a lot better than you last month.
A good year. What does it look like? You could request a book from your Storytime librarians. Little kids love that. We had science and STEAM programming for parents who were trying to keep their school-age kids busy. Our Storytimes were going, the adult programs were virtual. So we really kind of hit the ground running. And even though our doors were closed for two months, we were never closed. We were busy that whole time. So that's kind of our 2020. And then our bond project. I'm just going to continue talking because I can't tell if I'm hearing is an interruption or not, if I need to stop. Okay, so the bond project, you guys approved it in October, and the timing really could not be better for us. That was a continuation of bonds that we had ruled off and retired, and this is a new bond, no tax increase, but allows us to do a lot of really important projects in a perfect timeline with what's going on around us. So our bids will be received on April 7th and awarded on the 13th. In that first phase, which starts very soon, you're going to see a lot of exterior improvements going on with substantial completion by early '22. So we're looking forward to welcoming a lot of new residents to the downtown Greenwood area and having a library that's ready for them. So here's some of the things that they and you can expect to see. Exterior improvements. So we talked to you in October about the roof. So new gutters, new downspouts, not a new roof, but an improved roof. We're going to cover over the oldest part of our roof and then coat the rest to match. So it's going to look brand-new, look really sharp. We're replacing all of the lighting and the railings around the building. So the railings and the lighting will all match the city park. All of those items, like the railings, will be from Pointer. They're the ones who did old city park. Same kinds of lighting that will, I think, help us to kind of just fit in really well and keep our look up at the same time that everything else is improving so much. We are updating our landscaping, and that's really already done. We are updating our butterfly garden. If you look over here, this little corner of the building, it's just a small area, but it's gotten kind of weedy and rickety fence around it. So we're going to update that with a couple of seating areas that will be, again, the same thing you see over at the park, with some lighting around it. So at night, this is a well-lit and welcoming area with Wi-Fi. If anyone wants to sit and read or do some work, they'll have a place to do that. Our storage area has been kind of a problem child for us. That is a shed, I know, doesn't look very nice right now. So we're going to be updating that with the roof that matches the building and some more subtle colors, a nice dumpster enclosure, and just try to make that neat and clean and draw your eye as you go by. So we're really trying to keep our exterior up. We'll be updating stonework that's kind of fallen apart over the last 20, 25 years. So really, the whole exterior of the building will get an update in this project. Interior updates, we have some exciting stuff. I wish I had pictures of all of it, but what I do have is that we're going to be replacing all of the shelving and furniture and updating that, making that more accessible, easier to clean, all of that good stuff. Staff offices will be attached, kitchenettes, staff bathrooms. We will be, if you see here, adding more study rooms. So last 2019, we had five study rooms upstairs that were booked all the time. Now we're going to have 11. Those reservable spaces will include this new boardroom, which will be, like right now, that's the door to administration, and it's on the southwest corner of the building. So that nice boardroom, instead of just being used once a week, or maybe once every other week by our own meetings, we'll be able to have that available for local businesses. You maybe have not a local office building for their own board meetings, they can bring their people in and have meetings. This is how we see some of our study rooms being used, and we're trying to meet that need. We're also going to expand our studio. So this is our existing studio with a video and sound recording area, the all kinds of equipment, sewing machine, cricket machine, wide-format printer, stuff for individuals and businesses to use. We're expanding that out and adding both equipment and space. Some of the, one of the pieces of equipment we're adding is called a Glowforge, and that printer is very cool. It allows you to carve or engrave on almost any surface. So you can put acrylic in there, wood, metal, whatever you want to do. Some people will engrave their logo on their laptop. I'm not that brave, but it can do a lot of very cool projects for the small business people who want to put their brands on items, for instance. So that's all coming. And then outside of this area, not going to really look like this, but it's going to be an area we call the office. So we see a lot of business people who come in, they work from home, or they come in between appointments, and they need a place to work. So we're going to give them a nice big monitor, Bluetooth keyboards, and space to spread out and do their work. And we really, that's really going to be well-received as well. Finally, inside, we have the GPL living room. I don't know if you know that libraries are the location for a lot of supervised visitations. So a lot of social workers come in, and families who are in transition and trying to retain or get back custody of their children are having very long visits here at our library. Four hours is a very normal period of time. And during that time, they need to cook a meal and show that they can care for their children. And it's kind of a hard thing for us to handle just when it happens, wherever they are in the building. So we are creating a living room that will have a comfortable, home-style space that they can be comfortable in, and a little kitchenette where they can use a microwave and cook a little meal if they need to, and reserve that for two hours at a time. We think this is going to be, we know it's going to be very, very well-used, and it's not just for supervised visits, but for other people as well. And if you're asking yourself, so why does a, why does a public library need to serve supervised visits? Well, most of the families that we see coming in do not go to libraries. They don't need, their parents, their kids don't really have a tradition of reading. And what we've seen is that when they come through this process and spend so much time here, by the end, we have reunited families who are signing up for Storytime and kids who are reading by the time they get to kindergarten. And we think this is a great opportunity, and we've seen it in multiple families so far. So we're just trying to find a space to make this really work well for these families and improve lives for everybody. So those are some of the highlights of the interior updates. And then what's coming up now. So right now, we're doing taxes. We partner with VITA Tax Volunteers every year, and we are all booked up. Please don't send your parents for an appointment because there aren't any left. But we, this year, will probably serve over 400 low-income and elderly clients with free tax services, something we do every year. The VITA Tax Volunteers are amazing people. We are starting our First Citizen Science Program in May, and that will help our local community gather data for the Audubon Society about hummingbirds while also learning about them as a family. Our Healthy Habits Challenge is starting this week. So you might see people out in their tennis shoes, out in the park, having walking book clubs, talking about books and walking, and getting 30 minutes of exercise a day and 30 minutes of reading, not at the same time. The studio is open, crafting, recording, 3D printing, and our virtual Storytime is still going strong. And I talked really fast, and that's it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Cheryl, and appreciate it, and we appreciate all the work the library does. It's amazing. Any questions at this time from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. All right, this is the time where we set aside for members of the audience to address the council concerning matters that are on the agenda. If you would like to do so, please speak up, state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute time limit. Anyone? Give you just a second. Be sure your microphone's not muted.
Hi, this is Alexis Sauter. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, again, Alexis Sauter. I'm a project manager with KSM Location Advisors. I'm presenting, you know, project specifics a little later tonight as it relates to just the introduction of Resolution 21-07 for GLA properties, but I wanted to just take a minute and the opportunity to just comment here briefly at the beginning of the meeting, really just kind of speaking generally to the benefits of all things related to speculative commercial developments. I know we're one of many projects being considered this evening, so just wanted to take this opportunity to comment broadly. Again, like I said, I'm a project manager with KSM Location Advisors, or a national site collector and incentives consulting group, and I just wanted to attest that spec development is something that we quite often see communities internally struggle with. You know, how much is too much? Developers don't need incentives. The city loses control over occupiers, et cetera. Those are all statements that are common concerns when we're working on behalf of, in this case, a developer seeking abatement of spec product. So all of this said, however, a strong portion of the formula that goes into a successful economic development strategy for any community, right, is to have continued development of a range of speculative facilities. So as a community who is very strategically and purposefully planning for growth, right, you guys have got a lot of great things going on with Aspire. You guys are going to want to be able to position yourself with inventory that is either already complete or is nearing shell completion. We work with a ton of, you know, like I said, on a national scale, work with many new-to-market employers, and I sincerely can tell you that they will only consider fully abated, already constructed buildings so much of the time. I think you guys probably know, but for anybody listening at home, generally speaking, it's about a year-long endeavor, right, to go through the public approval process and go through the construction process of building a shell building. And again, for many new-to-market opportunities a year, and especially kind of in this post-COVID, you know, 3PL world, it is just way too long of a time period for, you know, for occupants to be fitting that into drop-dead production deadlines. I think there is, there is definitely a balance to be stricken, right, in terms of offering incentives versus the return on the investment that you guys as a city are receiving, but I would just like to, again, speak certainly on behalf of the project that I'll be talking about later, but, but those on the agenda as well, to just continue to consider the return on the investment that you're, that you're making in terms of incentives. The tax liability for any piece of vacant land is nominal compared to having a constructed development on the parcel. And even with an abatement in place, there is a substantial amount of tax revenue that's getting phased in, and it's not a direct benefit to the developer. It is being passed through and getting phased into the occupier. And certainly, once the abatements burn off, right, it's a really quick turnaround to see the savings that, again, that were initially passed on and phased into the occupier to be, you know, kind of quote-unquote "paid back to the city." And that's just the real, that's just the real abatement, or that's the real property tax revenue, right? That's not even factoring into, quite often, you're going to see some pretty significant infrastructure improvements that are made with these types of developments, and I'll talk more about that a little later tonight. And that, and again, that's not even considering the business personal property investments that typically come along with a tenant for an occupier of these types of developments. So I know I talked really fast, but generally, just kind of wanted to throw some of those key points out there for consideration, again, not just for our project this evening, but for the other ones that are on the agenda as well. So I thank you for, let me take a minute to comment briefly tonight, and I will look forward to sharing more details with regards to our project specifically later on tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? And again, there's a five-minute time limit, and if you would, if you wish to do so, please speak up, state your name and address for the record. All right, hearing done, moving on. Ordinances and resolutions. Notice of intent to consider, ordinance number 2109.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map adopted by reference in Unified Development Ordinance Number 20-29. Correct district classification title of public amenities to open space sponsored by Dine.
We have a motion. Motion, Mr. Dine, second. Second, my Mr. Hopper. Anyone here wish to speak to us about this?
Yes, sir, I am Dale Davis, Planning Director. So as we adopted our new zoning ordinance, in early drafts of that ordinance, we referred to the open space properties such as churches, parks, schools as public amenities. In final drafts, we changed it from public amenities to open space, but the zoning map was already complete at that time. So that change did not get reflected on the zoning map. So this amendment before you is to clarify that label in the legend so it aligns with the zoning ordinance that was adopted.
All right, any questions for Mr. Davis? All right, hearing done, and roll call, ordinance 2109.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Orderance 2109 passes on a vote of nine to zero. Ordinance 2110.
An ordinance to amend the text of ordinance 20-29 Unified Development Ordinance, Article 25, Division 2, Section 100230, flood hazard overlay district to correct section reference and typographical errors, sponsored by Dine.
We have a motion.
I'm moved.
Motion, Mr. Lexi, I believe. Second.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Dine. Mr. Davis, you want to talk about this one too, or somebody else?
Absolutely, I will talk about it. This is a series of citation corrections and a few typographical changes to reflect changes requested by the Department of Natural Resources. Department of Natural Resources requires approval of our floodplain standards. We had gotten that approval during the drafting stage, but they reviewed our adopted copy and had some corrections they wanted after adoption. So this ordinance is to take care of what the Department of Natural Resources has requested that we correct.
All right, any questions for Mr. Davis? All right, hearing done, and roll call, ordinance 2110.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Bates.
Aye.
Orderance 2110 passes on a vote of nine to zero. First reading, ordinance 2108.
An ordinance amending the Greenwood Fire Department merit system to remove requirement for lateral transfer application process, sponsored by Campbell and Gibson.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion of Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Of my Mr. Dine. Any discussion on the council? Any questions? All right, hearing done, and roll call, ordinance 2108, first reading.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
And Campbell.
Aye. Orderance 2108 passes, first reading, on a vote of nine to zero. Second reading, ordinance 2105.
An ordinance amending Chapter 8, Article 4, Section 8-28, and Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 2-38 of the Greenwood Municipal Code 1993, to amend the penalties for parking violations and amended, mending-related sections, sponsored by Dine.
We have a motion.
I'm moved.
Motion, Mr. Dine, second. Second, my Mr. Hopper. Any discussion, ordinance 2105? All right, hearing done, and roll call, second reading, ordinance 2105.
Gibson.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Mr. Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
And Dine.
Aye.
Orderance 2105 passes, second reading, nine to zero. Resolution 2103.
A resolution approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Greenwood and Pleasant Township, Johnson County, regarding fire protection, sponsored by Gibson.
We have a motion. Motion of Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Williams. Any, oh, Lexi?
It's Mr. Lexi.
All right. We'll give it to Mr. Williams, if that's all right. Any discussion, resolution 2103. Hearing done, and roll call, resolution 2103, second reading.
Gil.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
And Gibson.
Aye.
Resolution 2103 passes, second reading, nine to zero. Resolution 2105.
A resolution confirming Resolution 2104, the declaration of a certain area within the City of Greenwood, an economic revitalization area, and qualifying certain real property improvements for property tax abatement, and setting the time and place for a public hearing. Shear GW5 LLC, 703 North Graham Road, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
We have a motion. Motion, Mr. Hopper, do you want to second?
Second.
Second, my Ms. Gibson. And Ms. Coons, I believe this is where the public hearing should take place, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, we'll open it up for a public hearing. If you would like to speak for or against Resolution 2105, confirming Resolution 2104, please speak up, state your name and address for the record.
Dale Marmaduke, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I would like to speak against this, and I, in that, well, we got enough warehouses anyway, but I recall a few weeks ago, without a second hearing or public input, the council passed the final siding rule, adding $6,000 to each house. And in this case, for this warehouse, could you, without public hearing or input of any type, suspend the rules and have the warehouse put riffraff and rock around the retention pond? As you know, it's raining today, the retention ponds that don't have rock around them are pouring all sorts of dirt into the area that the citizens must pay the storm sewer fee to keep cleaned out. And I think it would be nice to put some requirements on the warehouse builders to finish the project and add some stone around the retention ponds so they don't look quite as awful as they currently look all around the city. And if we're getting new ones on, let's go ahead and add this in where it's convenient, and it will save and beautify this city in the long run. I think this is a better thing to do than force final siding on people without any public notice or a chance to speak against it. And you got to admit, these warehouse areas are just ugly eyesores. So that is my comment, and I thank you for listening.
Right, anyone else wishing to speak for or against Resolution 2105?
Yes, I'd like to speak, Mr. President, if you would, please. My name is Pat Sherman, Compass Point CPAs. I'd like to speak and reference Resolution 2105. This is a resolution on GW5, Shear Building. It's a building that is not a warehouse, it's light industrial building, it's 169,728 square feet. It's on Graham Road, just north of Keaton Way, on the side of the road. This is developed by Shear, who has developed several buildings in the Greenwood area. Larry Seigler's on the call with us, he's the president of, the CEO of Shear. And I would like to make comments in regards to the real estate tax, and I appreciate Mrs. Sauter's comments from KSM earlier, and just to add to some of those, on this particular lot itself, the current real estate taxes are $437. After this building is completed, just, now, this is the real estate tax on the land, which is not abated, is $68,135 estimated to be per year. So you can see the dramatic increase. The Peterson Group, they do a beautiful job on these buildings, you can see the others they've had. And in our last meeting, you'd asked about the, I indicated that if you build these buildings, they will get occupied. We have in Uh, what we have in, in our Greenwood area, Amazon, Amcor, California Custom Fruits, Cooper Tires, Energizer, FedEx, Lowe's, Pitbulls, and Milwaukee Tool, all of those companies came into a speculative building. The, the time that people, these companies start looking for a project and the time that they actually, um, want to move in, uh, these, these buildings taken a year, at least a year to develop. Um, when a company decides to come into a market, they, they want a building that's either already started or, or completed. And, and I think those were the Ms. Sowers' comments as well. I can tell you that on Chaney, uh, Road, uh, the initial lease on the building is two hundred and forty-one thousand square feet. That, that building was completed in December and that initial lease on that building was signed the same month that the building was completed. And, and the one that's on Keaton Way, another Shear property, one hundred and eighty-six thousand. That initial lease was signed while the building was still under construction. So what we're trying to indicate to the council and to the citizens of, of our city is that these buildings are very important to the economic development of our community. Uh, we have the developers that are willing to put millions of dollars in the ground, uh, to put these buildings up. And then, uh, we have, and people that I just, uh, indicated, uh, come in and because they have a building underway or completed, uh, the leases tend to be signed, uh, right away. So, um, I, I would, uh, like to, uh, take any questions that the council may have in regards to that. Um, the, you have to abate.
All right, anyone else, uh, wishing to speak for or against resolution twenty-one oh five?
Mr. President, this is the mayor, may I comment on this?
Yes, please.
I want to just thank, um, Mr. Sherman for what he had to say as long, as well as, um, Alexis with what she had to say. Um, unfortunately, Mr. Marmaduke is unclear in what he's talking about, once again. And our stormwater department does oversee these things, we make sure that there is no illicit runoff that runs into the storm systems. These buildings are built very well and each one of them has proven, um, year over year to bring in jobs that are at the county median average or above. And we've been very fortunate to have these buildings come in, we've been very fortunate to have these developers come in. And these things do actually help our community to bring in more better paying jobs, more, uh, better paying taxpayers, and they're great for our community and, uh, I appreciate them coming, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against resolution twenty-one oh five? All right, hearing none, then close the public hearing, any, uh, discussion on the council, the resolution twenty-one oh five? Hearing none and roll call, resolution twenty-one oh five.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Nay.
Williams.
Nay.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
And Hill.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-one oh five passes six to three. New business and introduction of new ordinances, ordinance twenty-one eleven.
An ordinance amending the twenty-twenty-one salary ordinance, common council ordinance number twenty dash thirty-one, to change the Director of Court Operations title and increase the position salary in City Court, to add positions and revise a position title in the Parks and Recreation Department and to add and decrease positions in the sanitary sewer utilities sponsored by DINE.
Anyone wishing to speak to us about this?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Louis Gregory.
Yes.
Uh, can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I sometimes doubt my technical competence. Uh, the portion of this, uh, ordinance, uh, that affects the City Court, uh, comes as a part of our restructuring of various functions in the City Court, uh, coming out of, uh, the last period of, of a year or so, uh, where we have had, well, uh, basically a crisis. Uh, I was, I learned at a very early age, never let a crisis go to waste. Uh, so we're, we have been looking at our operations and, uh, how we want to move forward. As part of that, uh, I have identified a problem in our probation department, uh, has been in, uh, the accounting and, uh, record keeping and, uh, uh, the reports that we must file with the various entities that give us money. Uh, and we're getting about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year of grants from, uh, either the state or, uh, private, uh, well, public-private organizations. Uh, to remedy the problem, uh, I'm restructuring, uh, Angie McGay Hay's position, uh, she has an accounting background and is very familiar with basically everything City Court does, uh, to make her responsible for all of the court and probations, uh, fiscal and, uh, reporting and accounting responsibilities. Uh, with that would come, uh, an increase in pay. Uh, the additional money would be coming from the probation department. We have a vacant, uh, probation officer position with a, a salary more than adequate to, to cover the increase. So I'm not asking for a new appropriation, uh, of either probation money or of taxpayer dollars. Uh, we can get through this year and then in the, in the coming years, the increase in her, her, her salary, uh, would continue to be paid out of probation fees. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
All right, any questions for the judge at this point? All right, i- anyone else wish to address their portion of this ordinance?
Mr. President, Mayor, may I ask a question?
Rob Taggert, the Director of Record.
All right, Rob, hold on just a second, I believe the mayor would like to address this, ask a question.
Um, Judge Gregory, just a couple of questions about this.
Sure.
I've noticed over the last few years, um, and I, and I don't mean to be personal about this, but Ms. McGay seems to work every holiday and has an extremely large amount of overtime that is, um, put in on comp time. Will this help limit that and stop those hours, especially the holiday pay?
Uh, yeah, the honest answer is, I don't know. Uh, Angie, uh, Angie does work constantly, uh, we have talked about that, uh, it has come up several times, but she is about as conscientious a person as I have ever met. Um, what I will tell you and what I will commit to you is, uh, that we are gonna, are gonna cut back those hours if, if, if we have to limit her access to the building, but I don't think that, I don't think we'll have to do that. Uh, your, your point is very well made, you are exactly right. Um, I'll, I, I will make my business to do better.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right, Mr. Taggert.
Good evening. Um, the, the, uh, that I have on the agenda, uh, is for two additional positions. Uh, one is a, uh, retrofitting the existing community center associate role, uh, to be inclusive of community center associate, uh, and fieldhouse associate as well. Um, the money is already funded, it was approved in last year's budget, uh, for the fieldhouse part-time staff. Uh, the addition of that, uh, position will give us the flexibility, uh, and it's not intended for this, but in, in the occasion that, uh, we would have a shortage in either facility, um, per the, per the job descriptions, they would be able to, uh, help out one another between the fieldhouse and the community center. Uh, and secondly, uh, the other position as well, summer camp, our youth summer camp is getting ready to ramp up and, uh, due to some insurance concerns, some liabilities, uh, we feel better, uh, to bring the drivers onto the school bus as a part-time employee, uh, so the position of a, a program, a recreation program driver was created. Uh, again, that will be funded purely all through our S and R funds as well, so it won't be any more, uh, asked for appropriation.
All right, any questions for Mr. Taggert at this time? All right, anyone else wish to address us concerning the sanitary sewer?
Yes, sir, Lisa Vest, Director of Human Resources, I will speak, uh, in regard to the utility sanitary sewer positions. We currently have fourteen maintenance labor positions that require a CDL license and what we're asking to do is to move two of those positions of the fourteen into the maintenance labor position, not requiring a CDL license. Um, so there is no additional appropriation needed, there's no increase, um, in positions, it's just restructuring a couple of the positions out of the, um, ones that require a CDL, um, so we can get some, um, folks in there and, um, get the sanitary sewer, uh, department some help. Um, and with that, what we're looking to do is for those folks that would come into the non-DOT position, um, those folks would have that opportunity, we would like for them to go forward and get their CDLs so then we can move them into, uh, vacant CDL positions and then potentially move those without CDLs into the non, uh, DOT positions as well.
All right, thank you, any questions for her? All right, any discussion on the council concerning ordinance twenty-one eleven and there is a request for suspension of the rules through second reading?
Mr. President, my question, uh, why the urgency of going through all this in one night, uh, to get this accomplished?
All right, would someone like to explain the urgency to get this done in one night?
Mr. President, this is Terry McLaughlin. Uh, I can speak to, uh, the sanitary sewer. There's currently, I believe, seven vacancies in that department and, uh, we're much like the, uh, Police Department and Fire Department of trying to get people hired and into some positions, so we've had, uh, at least one retire since the beginning of the year and I believe there's another one scheduled to go later this year. That's, uh, what we're trying to get done in sanitation.
All right, any other comments on the urgency of this? All right, any other questions on the council? I entertain a motion for suspension of the rules through first reading.
So moved.
Motion of Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine, any discussion on suspension?
I just wanted to thank, I wanted to thank Ron Bates for asking about the urgency of this. Uh, I have, I have concerns when we, it seems to be, we've had several meetings in a row where we've gone through the suspension of the rules and I'd rather do three meetings or two meetings, but we're doing it in one meeting a lot lately and I, I appreciate hearing the rationale from, from Terry, but I have the, I have that concern.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or discussion on the council about suspension of the rules? Hearing none, then roll call on suspension of the rules of ordinance twenty-one eleven through first reading.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Aye. Rules are suspended on ordinance twenty-one eleven through first reading on a vote of nine to zero, do I have a motion on first reading?
So moved.
Motion of Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine, any discussion? All right, hearing none and roll call, uh, first reading, ordinance twenty-one eleven.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
And Lexi.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-one eleven passes first reading, nine to zero, do I have a motion for suspension through second reading? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion of Mr. Dine, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hopper? All right, any discussion on suspension of the rules through second reading on ordinance twenty-one eleven? Hearing none and roll call, ordinance twenty-one eleven, suspension of the rules through second reading.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Nay.
Hopper.
Nay, yeah, terrible idea.
Nay.
Sure.
Lexi.
Nay.
Middleton.
Nay.
Ordinance, uh, suspension of the rules through second reading and ordinance twenty-one eleven fails to pass. Uh, resolution twenty-one oh six.
A resolution amending resolution number twenty zero six, a resolution declaring a certain area within the City of Greenwood Economic Revitalization Area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the time and place for public hearing, County Line Properties LLC, eleven seventy-three Airport Parkway LLC, Phase Two, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Someone like to talk to us about this?
Mr. President, if you can hear me, Dustin Huddleston for the applicant.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Dustin Huddleston for the record, uh, for the applicant, one-one-seven-three Airport Parkway LLC. Uh, if you recall, we were here in front of you about a year ago where you approved this abatement, uh, and we're back to request an amendment, which I'll talk about an amendment. Uh, uh, just, uh, to refresh, uh, your memory, uh, the applicant, uh, is an LLC created by two local, uh, business partners, Jeff Smith, who's on the, uh, call here with me, uh, Projects Plus, he's the owner and operator, does a lot of projects in the Greenwood area, providing professional engineering and surveying work, uh, and also Joel Fritz, who's the president and founder of CTC, uh, a, a commercial contracting company that's been providing services in the greater Indianapolis area since two thousand and three. If you recall, uh, last year, we had two, uh, abatement requests in front of you, which were both approved and it was a, a two-phase project, both consisting of building twenty-four thousand square feet buildings on the airport parkway, each costing one point eight million dollars. Uh, the first phase is set to start construction this month and, uh, that abatement, uh, we're not requesting any amendment on, uh, and again, that was approved. The second phase, as we started to look at, uh, developing everything, uh, we discovered that we could, uh, increase the square footage of the building from twenty-four thousand square feet to thirty-three thousand eight hundred square feet. Uh, thus, after just consulting with, uh, your, uh, legal counsel, I was determined that the existing abatement did not provide for that increase, uh, so therefore we had to request an amendment as we're here tonight on that abatement. Uh, what, what that increase would do, if you would approve the amendment, uh, would I characterize, give you more bang for your buck because it would increase, uh, the project costs, the total assessment and thus the total taxes that would be realized, uh, even if the full abatement, uh, is spread out over the ten-year period and no, um, tenants come in during that period, which would be, uh, drastic. Uh, what, what the increase of that, uh, square footage would be on the cost side of the construction, it would go from one point eight million construction cost to two point five million, which is about a thirty-nine percent increase. Uh, the, uh, that would push up the projected building assessment, uh, to forty percent and the total assessment to thirty-three percent. And then when we get down to, uh, projected real estate taxes annually, uh, currently it's fifty-four dollars and sixty-six cents that are gained on taxes right now, uh, with the total assessed value. And after, um, the, uh, building is complete with the new square footage, uh, it would be- And after the building is complete with the new square footage, it would be yielding forty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars of taxes each year. That's after the abatements is completed. In that span of the ten-year abatement, the taxes that would still be paid even when the abatement is applied would still be two hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That's increased twenty-seven percent from the current abatement that's already been approved. So with this, we just feel like it was an opportunity to put a bigger building in, just a little bit bigger building. It expands on the abatement you've already approved and gives, again, a little bit more bang for your buck and more tax revenue. We think these buildings are unique because they are not the larger structures that are being built a little bit more common, which those are needed, but these are the smaller buildings that I think are going to find some businesses that need a little bit smaller venues. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and hope you approve the amendment in the next couple of meetings.
And any questions for Mr. Huddleston at this time? All right, hearing none, then moving on, thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
Thank you.
Moving on, resolution twenty-one oh seven.
A resolution declaring certain area within the city of Greenwood and economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the time and place for public hearing, GLA Properties LLC, for building a complex sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
All right, someone here wants to speak to us?
Yes, good evening, my name is Amanda Rabidou, I'm the Vice President of Economic Development for Aspire Johnson County. I just wanted to introduce myself really quickly and also provide a quick overview of what we have been seeing across the county over the last year, which really piggybacks on what Mr. Sherman and Alexis mentioned earlier in the meeting. Of the sixty-eight project requests that we've received and responded to over the last year, forty-one of those have been seeking an existing building. So speed to market is such a top priority for a lot of the industries that we're seeing and looking to attract. So Alexis will cover more on Skanel's plans, but I just wanted to provide you with that quick overview of the importance of having those ready and available assets as we work to attract those advanced industries. So Alexis?
Great, thank you, I appreciate that, thanks Amanda. I am going to share my screen. Can you guys see, oh wait. Can you guys see the presentation?
Yes.
Thumbs up, okay, great, thank you. Again, just to reintroduce myself, Alexis Souter, I'm a project manager with KSM Location Advisors. We are associated with the local accounting firm, Kat Stafford Miller. We have been a partner of Skanel for quite a few years now, as they continue to consider development and investment plans, most certainly in central Indiana. And I think out there on the line somewhere, we've got Sean Koffer and Courtney Lamen with Skanel Properties as well. So that, as we get to the end of the presentation, if there are any development-specific questions that arise, they are, they are certainly able to, to address those. So taking a look at our project overview, we would like to talk with you guys this evening about potential developments being considered by Skanel up at Greenwood Park. This specific project is inclusive of four separate developments with a total investment, as you can see there, of fifty-one million dollars. The tract of land that we are talking about where these developments would be are along Allen Road, just east of Collins Road. And you can see that we've outlined that the current property tax liability for the parcels that make up this area is approximately sixty-five hundred dollars a year. So what we're introducing to council this evening as part of this project, right, is property tax abatement for the real estate improvements. We are proposing an alternate schedule that you can see here, that we found with past developments really kind of benefits the city with no, no one year being a hundred percent. But it's also going to provide substantial value to the future occupants of these developments. So you can see the fourth or fifth bullet point down, right, that the property tax phase-in schedule, years one to three at eighty percent, year four at seventy, year five at sixty-five, year six at fifty, seven at thirty-five, five, nine at fifteen, and year ten at five percent. It follows the traditional statutory schedule pretty, pretty closely, but again, just those years one through three being eighty percent as opposed to a hundred. So again, based on this property phase-in schedule, we would estimate that the projects would generate over an estimated five point five million dollars in real property taxes, and then once the abatements burn off, our estimated annual real property taxes would be a little over one million dollars a year. Now, I know I'm putting a ton of numbers out there, I usually do in, in this first slide, but I think another metric that we know that council pays close attention to, as you guys are trying to evaluate, again, just kind of this return on investment. Here is just, you know, a, a chart that we've got, just over the, over ten years, the estimated real property taxes total to be abated and then paid are outlined here. And again, just here on this next slide, this is just illustrating where these proposed developments are being considered. So right here along the north side, Allen Road. And then for each of these buildings, I've got the corresponding, you know, kind of order of development, if you will, and, and what is currently being considered to, you know, be, have the ground be broken on, and the order in which they would be started and then completed over here. So buildings one and two, assuming that we are successful through this approval process, we would be expecting to break ground here in Q two of two thousand and twenty-one. Again, kind of sticking to the average length of construction time being about a year, wrap that up by the end of quarter one next year. And then the third and fourth buildings following, following thereafter. So here, we'd like to just kind of touch on, I, I think a lot of, a lot of you on council and probably those listening very familiar with Skanel Properties. But definitely like to point out that they are a local partner, and they've been a partner of Greenwood's for quite some time. They, their first project, and I've kind of got a timeline here on some subsequent slides, but first project in Greenwood started out with Wirth Supply and some of the other brands that you guys might recognize, projects that they have been developers for include Pitney Bowes, California Custom Fruits and Flavors, QCD, and FedEx. They are locally headquartered here in Indianapolis and, you know, have got a long, long history. They've been in business over thirty-one years, they've done four hundred and fifty projects and have developed over forty million square feet. And I think the last point that I really always like to highlight is that seventy percent, which is extremely high for this space, right, of their business is derived from repeat clients, and you can definitely get a sense for the types of household names, right, that, that are their clients there on that slide. So looking at their history in Greenwood, again, two thousand and fifteen was really kind of Skanel's first major project in Greenwood, worth, with the Worth Services Building. And I won't go through each one of these, but I just really want to highlight how long Skanel has been partnered with Greenwood and the successful development projects that, that we've had over the years. So starting in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and seventeen was really when Greenwood Park, when that development began, they had, you know, we've got a total of close to two hundred acres out there. And that first project out there was Pitney Bowes, four hundred, almost fifty thousand square feet, sixteen million dollars of business personal property investment, two hundred and twenty-four jobs. Twenty eighteen brought along Project Brutus, twenty nineteen, California Custom Fruits, twenty twenty, Quality Custom Distribution Services. And again, I mean, you can just see the level of business personal property investment and the number of jobs, right, that, that come along with these projects. Looking, you know, kind of two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty, they've really estimated just the real property, right, not including that per business personal property. I mean, nearly forty-eight million dollars worth of assessed value for real property that's been brought into the city of Greenwood. This slide here, definitely want to highlight, and I kind of touched on during the public comment section, right, there is a ton of private investment that has been made by Skanel over the years. I think it's really just truly a testament to the partnership between Greenwood and Skanel. And I won't read each and every bullet, but you see a lot of improvements, a lot of over-improvements of road, utilities, you know, and like infrastructure. They've done this, private investments made to date without the request of city funding of any sort. And just what's here on this particular slide totals more than five point eight million dollars. So looking at these developments and just really kind of how they fit into the city's, the county's economic development and marketing plans and kind of thinking about what future tenants would look like. Again, I, you know, I mentioned it earlier, we and Skanel, we acknowledge there has been so much time, there's been so much hard work, costs alike, right, by city officials and Aspire, you guys have, you guys are steps ahead above the rest. You know, you guys have created a very strategic, thoughtful, realistic economic development plan. And one, you know, again, one part of, of one strategic goal, right, is to boost site development for catalyst projects. And that is what these speculative developments do. There is a range in product sizes that we've got spec for this project. And again, continued development of spec facilities just has to be done, as you guys are, are being very purposeful about your planned future growth. Thinking about potential future tenants, again, so many new-to-market occupiers are only going to consider fully abated, already constructed buildings. The tenants that are going to be looking at these facilities specifically, right, they're going to want a good labor draw, they're going to want easy access to high-speed roadways, and most especially for some of the smaller developments, it is definitely reasonable to estimate that, you know, you, you've got a user who would, would have heavy automation, they'd be drawn to this product type, and, you know, with those types of users, you're getting a higher skilled, higher wage workforce. The, the brokerage, early inquiry on these projects have already been robust. So again, to just be, to acknowledge that so many users will really only consider development that is either in process or completed, that without, without these in inventory, right, that, that takes Greenwood out of the running immediately, very early on in the site selection process. And again, I mean, we have, we have found an abatement schedule, I think that has worked well for both the city and Skanel. We're not requesting a hundred percent rebate, abatement, we've kind of got that alternate schedule that we've, that we've proposed here. So in conclusion, we are respectfully requesting the support of a ten-year real property tax abatement, again, on that alternate schedule. I know we're just introducing it tonight, we're not asking you guys to vote, we're just putting this information in front of you. But as we hopefully successfully move along through the process, we would just ask that, that council considers that Skanel is, is truly a proven community partner who believes in, who shares in your Greenwood's strategic vision. They want to be attracting high-quality employers. Again, they've, they've invested five point eight million dollars of their own funds developing infrastructure there at Greenwood Park. These projects position Greenwood to grow and continue to grow. And finally, again, kind of getting into the weeds on the numbers, even with the abatement in place, these projects will generate a significant amount of property tax revenue, both real and personal, for the city of Greenwood. So with that, I, if there are any questions that we can answer, would love to do so now.
All right, any questions?
I have a couple, Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
First, I just want to say thank you to the presentation for showing that it is possible for a speculative building not to follow the standard abatement schedule. I know that is something I've spoken on, and I'm glad that you touched on that, that it does not hinder the business nor the city to deviate from that, so I appreciate that. My question that I do have is, given the recent change to prohibit truck travel between Collins and Griffith Road on Allen, are there, and I'm sorry if it's on that rendering, but are there any sort of things that the developer is doing to help the city with kind of preventing that from happening? I see those entrances off of Allen Road, I was just curious, if there's any deterrence with how that's being done?
I was going to maybe throw it to Sean or Courtney if they're out there, but if not, I mean, I could, I could definitely speak on, on, I think, Skanel's behalf, right? I think there is, again, a continued partnership when it comes to the approvals, this is not the site, final site plan by any means. So as it relates to any prohibited, prohibited truck, truck traffic, say that three times fast, that they are definitely, that they are a partner in, in working with the city on, on such fronts.
Thank you.
Right, any other questions? All right, appreciate it, appreciate the information, appreciate all the work that Skanel has done. I believe they've been a good partner with the city, and look forward to continuing to work with you. All right, moving on, resolution twenty-one oh eight.
A resolution declaring certain area within the city of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing. CA Industrial Holdings LLC, two-building complex sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
All right, anybody wishing to speak to us about this one?
I would, Mr. Campbell.
All right.
Pat Sherman, Compass Point CPAs for CA Industrial Holdings LLC. CA Industrial Holdings and Jim McGee's on the call with us today, founded in two thousand and four by Tom Scott. It's an integrated owner and operator and manager of real estate. A company's based in Chicago, Illinois, and it's, has real estate investing and developing, as I indicated, and has approximately thirteen billion dollars of assets in real estate across the United States, Europe, and Latin America. The proposal in front of you tonight is for the development of two buildings. The first building is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred square feet, the second building is four hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred square feet. The first building, currently, the real estate taxes that are being paid on the building, and building one is on about twenty-two acres, building two is on about twenty-two point two acres. Building one has eight hundred and twenty-two dollars a year in taxes on those acres. And with the development of building number one, that will go to seventy-five thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars per year in real estate tax paid on the land, and keep in mind that is not abated. On building number two, we have currently, for the twenty-three point eight three acres, it's going to be situated for building two, right now it's paying eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars a year in real estate tax. That will go to a hundred and four thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars annually, and again, that is not abated. The, what we've discussed at length tonight, and I'm appreciative of everyone that, that has brought information to the council, the necessity for these speculative buildings within our community. And I'm appreciative that we have people like CA Industrial that are willing to come into our community. Building one, the investment in the land is going to be over two point eight million dollars, and the investment in the building is going to be over fourteen million three hundred dollars. On building two, the investment in real estate is approximately three point eight million dollars. Building in the, the investment in the building is twenty million one hundred thousand dollars. As far as the amount that is totally abated on building one, the total actual tax paid would be about three point eight million, and the, not including the land, and then there's abatement of two point one. The, the total summary on building one is a total on ten years of real estate taxes that would be paid is two point four nine three million, and that amount of beta will be two point one million over that same period of time. And building two, the total real estate taxes, three point four million, that would be almost three point five that would be paid, and two, almost three million dollars would, would be abated. I'm available for any questions, you've already seen. You've already seen the investment opportunities that we get in Greenwood because we have these speculative buildings. I would take any questions that the council may have.
All right, any questions for Mr. Sherman at this time? Mr. Sherman, the agenda says you're requesting suspension of rules through first reading. Is that still your intent?
If I defer to legal counsel to the city, I think the ordinance may be written to that, Shauna, is that correct?
I believe it's up to the council. The request is in there. We will just, you know, make sure the hearing date is correct for what needs to go in there. It was our understanding, I think that's been placed on the agenda as a request for suspension of rules through the first reading.
It was, and I thank you for that. The owner, CA Ventures, the issue gets to be getting the closing done on the real property to make sure the abatement gets done in time so that we can close on the property timely, pushing it out to a public hearing that would probably be this meeting and at least three more. Is that right, Shauna?
If you did not suspend the rules, then yes, you would be bumped out three meetings. You would have to have then your first reading and a second reading. And then you would have the advertisement for the public hearing for the confirmatory at an additional meeting.
And that's the timeframe that we have an issue with, with the property that gets into the investment as far as the options on the property concerned.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules of Resolution 2108 through first reading. Do you have a second? Second to the motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second on Mr. Bates. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call on suspension of the rules through first reading on Resolution 2108.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
And Williams?
Aye.
Resolution 2108, the rules are suspended through first reading on a vote of eight to one. Have a motion for a first reading. Most of them, Mr. Dine, second, and Mr. Hopper. Any discussion, questions for Mr. Sherman or anyone?
I just want to say that it appears from this resolution that it, is it already in? Is this resolution number 2108?
Yes.
On the agenda, the caption says needs a public hearing, but on the resolution itself, it does not. It appears to have been written as though it is already in an ERA.
It does say it's had a place for a public hearing.
So you go ahead and suspend the rules and pass it through its first reading, and then we will confirm that it is not in an existing ERA. It will need that whole process because the caption that's on Resolution 202108 that is on the agenda does not match what's on the actual resolution. So we'll get to the bottom of that.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion on Resolution 2108? Hearing none, then roll call, Resolution 2108, first reading.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Middleton?
Williams?
Nay.
And Bates?
Aye. Resolution 2108 passes first reading on a vote of seven to two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you.
All right, miscellaneous business. This is the second opportunity for people in the audience to address the council concerning matters in this time that are not on the agenda. So if you would like to speak to the council, please speak up. And there's a five-minute time limit. State your name and address for the record, please. If you wish to speak up, make sure your mic is not muted. All right, hearing none. Then council business, we have a few CF1s. Have a motion on Greenwood.
By Greenwood Practice, already Resolution 1726.
We have a motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition is approved unanimously.
By my head, rescinding of those real estate resolution, 1930.
The motion by Mr. Hopper, second by second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Hearing none is approved unanimously.
By my head, rescinding of those personal property resolution, 1930.
Most of them, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Hearing no opposition passes unanimously.
By my head, also, Inc., Personal Property Resolution, 1408.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Hearing none, the last one passes unanimously. All right, any other miscellaneous business from the council?
Mr. President, I think at some time in the future, I would say sometime this year, we talked about it in the recent past about the census. And once that is fully done, that we need, we're going to get a count of members of the council, gather certain members to see if we need to redistrict our city.
Right, yeah, I was going to get with Corporation Council on that and see when we need to do that and a timeline. And then we'll put together a committee to look into that.
Very well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bates. Anything else on the council? All right, other miscellaneous business, Corporation Council.
We have none.
All right, the Controller's office?
Nothing.
Mr. Mayor?
I just want to thank those council members who voted for the shell buildings and then understand the importance of having those in our city and see our city progress forward. I appreciate it very much and thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, we are adjourned.